First of all, I apologize. Did not anticipate that we would have that second session, I do apologize. Obviously, we're trying to work with the Solicitor's Office and make sure that we're following the guidelines that we're committed to and the sunshine law, et cetera. So in that regard, we're going to make some changes going forward, and it's going to begin right now. And the first part will be number four.
Point of order. Could I make a motion to come out of executive session?
Yeah, you can make the motion.
To come out of executive session.
Somebody make a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Doolica. Obviously, if we had an executive session, deal with number four and five.
Yes, it's my position that the public has a right to have information regarding, not every detail of those particular agreements, but certainly the, at least, at the very least, an overview that includes discussion of the economic terms. And I believe that Ramil is prepared on number four to give a, to the extent we can, give a report on that litigation. And I think Ms. Rakovich is here to do the, give a summary of the CBA proposed agreement with Launa. The public would have a right then to speak after the summaries, and then counsel would vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
That will be the procedure going forward. Ms. Crocomall, you have the podium, please.
Thank you. First of all, historically, the Office of Law would prepare a resolution with the figures for the settlement, and we would distribute that and have it for the public. That was not provided this time. I take responsibility for that. The terms of the settlement with the case involving death of three minor children, the case was brought against Luzern County and the Philadelphia Department of Human Services. I attended a court-ordered mediation before the Third Circuit Federal Court, and there were, there was a settlement that was reached pending approval by Luzern County Council. The total amount of the settlement is $10,000. The Philadelphia Department of Human Services will contribute $5,000. Luzern County's contribution is another $5,000. There are no funds that will be taken from the general fund. No funds were taken from the general fund for the defense of this case, and there will be no other reason why any monies would come out of the general fund. So there were no dollars taken out of the general fund for the defense or the settlement.
Anything else, Ms. Crocomall?
Insurance company, the insurance company. The policy that was in place at the time of this event, the insurance company paid for the defense and will be paying for the settlement.
Any other comments at this point? Okay. Public now has a right to comment in that regard for number four, which is the resolution to approve the settlement of the pending litigation that Ms. Crocomall just responded to. Anyone in the public who would like to come to the podium and speak in that regard?
Mr. McGinley, while we're waiting, I was asked by several members of the public outside while I was waiting for an executive session, if council members could please speak into their microphones, they're having a hard time hearing through the television out there. We have over 100 people out there, including 50 corrections officers, so if we could try to speak into our microphones.
Anyone, Mr. Sheriff?
No.
Yes.
You mentioned those figures, $5,000, $10,000. Is that for the loss of three children? Is that the settlement for the three children and the last of three lives?
Ms. Crocomall has the information.
I know you didn't make the decision, the courts did, but I can't believe it when I heard that, you know?
Well, I can't believe it either. That sounds to me like-
In Luzern County, you don't have to pay one penny?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That part's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the settlement? Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second.
Who's second? Mr. Vo?
May I, yeah, me.
Who?
Me.
Okay. Mr. Vo's second. Under question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number five, the motion to adopt the resolution approving the collective bargain agreement between Luzern County and Launa Public Service Employees Union, Local 1300. Mr. Rakovich will come to the podium and provide highlights of the proposed agreement.
Thank you, members of council. As you know, the contract for Labor International, who represents the correctional officers and employees at the Division of Corrections, had expired in December 31st of 2018. Since that time, we have been under negotiations for one year, trying to negotiate a equitable contract for the county. The highlights of that would be the wages. There's two classifications of officers in our facility, correctional counselor, I mean corrections officers one and corrections officers two. For 2019, the current offer is a 3% bonus based on employees' 2018 salary. Now, we hear the word "bonus" and we say, "Oh, that's great." But that is in lieu of a rate, a percentage raise that would be cumulative upon the salaries. So a 3% bonus was for 2019, a 2.5% increase would be for 2020, a 2.5% increase for '21, 2.5 for 2022, and a 3% increase for 2023. The steps between a correctional officer two and a correctional officer one had widened. So for the correctional officer two, the salary difference was roughly $8,000 between correctional officer one and two. The bonus applied for those officers as well, which, once again, doesn't become cumulative into their annual salary. The increases for correctional officers two for 2020 are $1,501.26 plus $1,000 added to the pay scale, to bring them in line with the other officers. 2,000, I mean, 1,538.97 for '21, 1,577 for .26 for '22. So as far as the salaries, and then for '23, it was $1,940 added to the pay scale for them also. The clothing allowance for the Division of Corrections previously was $625, was allotted for each officer. They received a cash payment in that amount. We're increasing it, the proposal is to increase it to $700. However, that amount will be placed on a clothier. They will not receive a cash payment, it'll be on an account, and only certain items can be purchased off of that money. The hospitalization, the life, I mean, not life, the health insurance for the employees, the current employees that are in employment with us will pay 10% contribution until 2023, when the contribution increases to 12% of the cost. For employees hired after the date of the ratification of this contract, they will start at 12% of the health cost, and by 2023, they will be contributing 15% of the cost of the health care back to the county. One of the other issues was vacations. Previously, there were slots. We're now returning down to a soft cap minimum, which I understand every council member isn't going to comprehend, but I believe it would be a savings to the county. Rather than having slots and going, incurring additional overtime, we would stop when we reach our minimum manning complement, and no more vacations for a certain day would be granted. The next highlight issue on the proposal is correctional officer one, correctional officer two language. Two different buildings, two different classifications of employees. What we negotiated into the contract is that if there is a minimum in manning shortage at one building or the other, but the other has a surplus of officers, rather than filling that with an overtime from the pool of employees of that building, we can backfill from either facility. So a minimal offenders officer could come down and work at the main facility and avoid an overtime, or an officer at the main facility can go up and fill an over, a potential overtime spot there. We believe that that's a savings. And the last issue that's on our proposal is regarding our switching policy. Currently, employees are allowed to switch with another employee of the first shift or second shift, so that as long as they get their 40 hours in within a week and don't violate some very specific rules, they're in good standing. We've, were able to get nine sick days, a give-back of nine sick days per employee to be able to switch. Maybe give-back is a bit much, but what we're actually doing is saying, in order to be eligible to switch, you must have at least nine sick days on your books, which is substantial, I believe, to the savings for the county.
Anything else, Mr. Rakovich?
That would pretty much be everything, the highlights of the proposal.
Thank you. Members of the public? Oh, we should have a motion then, right?
You'll have, you can have public comment on-
Okay, members of the public, comment regarding number five, the collective bargain agreement between Luzern County and Launa Public Service Employees Union.
I have a question on the part relating to the switch. As I understand that, an employee, two employees can switch shifts without consulting management, I believe is how it's supposed to work. So in reference, if that's the case, and then in reference to the nine days, do they give up those nine days to do that switch, or do they just have to have nine days available for sick days? I don't quite understand what that's about.
Is that your only question?
It's my only question.
Thank you. Mr. Rakovich, you want to respond to that, please?
I may not have been clear enough. It has to be approved by management, and there are rules in place, that you can't do two back-to-back doubles when you're paying back a switch. It does have to be approved by management, management's aware of it, management signs off on it. The nine days, it's, in order to be able to, be allowed to switch, you have to have nine accrued days on your balance of time off.
But I think part of Mr. Scheiner's question was, what happens to those nine days? Are they still on your balance, or do you give those up?
Nope, they're still on their balance, but it, they're nine days that potentially aren't being used.
I have one question with regards to, with what Mr. Rakovich said about the increases that are incurred, especially with the uniform and other costs, because we just went through a budget. Will this impact, how will this impact this budget? And if not this budget, then will it, will it cause an increase in his budget within his division for 2021? That's my only question.
I'll take that one. For 2019, for 2019, Mr. Radell, all costs have been encumbered and enclosed in 2019, no need to do additional work on 2019 due to Mr. Rakovich working with that budget throughout the entire year. For 2020, council allocated a raise in the budget already. We're not going to be asking council for any additional money for 2020. Obviously, for 2021, we have to include everybody's salaries. I can't make a decision on 2021 at this point, because there is a big change in, you know, somebody who's a senior officer is making more than a lesser officer, and what that number is. I can't really speculate on that, up until the time the budget is in October. But I would say 2019 is enclosed, encumbered already. 2020, we're not asking for any more funds from county council.
Okay, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Newman?
Yeah, just a very simple question. When the day shift employee switches with the night shift employee, and the night shift employee goes to day shift, is there a recalculation of night differential? In other words, the day shift employee doesn't get night, he goes to, and he will not get night differential. And the nighttime employee will go to days, and he will still get the night differential? Is that what we're saying?
Okay.
All right. You did cover that base. Okay.
Want to check outside? None? Thank you. Anyone else? You miss anybody? Very good. Okay, we need a motion.
Present.
Mr. Snee? Ms. Sedman? Under question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
I don't agree with a lot of things in the contract, but I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Motion carries. Moving down to number six, motion to adopt the resolution declaring vacancy in Luzern County Children Youth Advisory Board. Mr. Bartoli, the letter is there as part of your information for this evening.
So moved.
Mr. Perry, do we have a second? Ms. Houck? Under question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
I don't agree with a lot of things in the contract, but I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Motion carries. Moving down to number six, motion to adopt the resolution declaring vacancy in Luzern County Children Youth Advisory Board. Mr. Camoni?
So moved.
Mr. Vo? And Ms. Radell? Under question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution declaring vacancy in Luzern County Children Youth Advisory Board. Mr. Camoni?
So moved.
Mr. Vo? And Ms. Radell? Under question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We added two agenda items. First was on to approve the schedule that was at your workplace. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Vo? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snee? Under question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. And the second one is to ratify the committee appointments.
So moved.
Ms. Radell?
Second.
Ms. McCurnett? Under question?
I think Mr. Griffin-
All in favor of-
Excuse me? To the question, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Griffin brought up the bylaws issue with the appointing the vice chair as well for the committee, right? Right, Walter? I don't know, maybe we could-
Well, I think it's just ratifying the committee members at this point. I will send out an updated copy with all the vice chairmans, and that'll be the number two person on the list.
And we'll ratify that again at the appropriate time, okay?
Okay. We have a motion, Ms. Radell, second, by Ms. McDermott. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
One? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. And now we're at public comment. And public comment is in regards to any item. It's an open comment period. Because we have many people who would like to come to the podium, we will try to strictly hear to the three minutes. I know that Mr. Griffin tried to get some procedures in place to get representatives of certain groups, correct, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, that's correct.
So we would be happy to have those representatives. I don't know who they are.
Ron Knapp was one, and I don't see the other, oh, is he here, the other gentleman? Or the other gentleman? Oh, is he out there? I think it's Kovalewski.
Mr. Kovalewski?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Knapp, you're first.
What about an item other than stormwater?
Once we get through those, we're still going to have public comment, Mr. Newman.
So this is, this is now the rain tax issue.
This is a stormwater fee.
Rain tax.
Well, the correct proper title is the stormwater fee, but whatever you wish. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask about the lien that was in the paper about Luzern County not paying the rain tax in respect to that. Did that put us in a negative spot for our credit rating?
Is that your, you're going to do something else too, right?
Yes.
Okay, would you do that? And then you have that question at the end, and I'll, the manager can help us with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Yes. Again, my name is Ron Knapp from Nanticoke, Pennsylvania. I'm a concerned citizen who feels the rain tax is a fee that is imposed on the wrong individuals, and I'm here to explain my position on the federal government mandate that was initiated during the previous administration. The mandate suggests chemicals in the waterways. I see the issue as what is right in front of our eyes. Litter is the issue. If it is chemicals, then why would brine be used to hold down dust during the summer months on dirt roads, which is a byproduct of the gas and oil industry? Also, how about the liquid salt that is sprayed on the roadways before icing weather-related storm? The true issue is stormwater runoff that needs adequate straight-through conduit to get to the streams, creeks, and rivers. In other words, to prevent flooding. When the tax was imposed, a fleet of trucks were unveiled to go around and vacuum the trash and debris from the storm drains, so the rainwater didn't run up against obstructions, which would restrict it from going through the stormwater infrastructure to the catch basins. I believe the litter people choose to dispose of out their car windows and discard in illegal dumping sites are a major contributor to the storm drains clogging and the causes water to back up on streets and into basements as well. Either that, or the trash ends up pushing through and ends up in catch basins. And if it's, isn't caught, ends up in the river. I wanted to add an example that was shown on News Watch 16 on a segment on Power to Save. The segment showed how people flush baby wipes down their toilets, and it ends up clogging the pump station's equipment and the main containment areas of the sewer treatment plant. This issue isn't any different than what you and I see when traveling down our city streets and highways. Some of that trash ends up collecting in storm drains. I appreciated the report to bring to the attention this growing problem. It costs money to fix and repair such things, and it's at taxpayers' expense. The important thing is people are being made aware of it. In the last meeting I attended, I expressed my concerns about out-of-state landlords and absentee landlords. I believe if these property owners police their tenants properly, making sure they have the appropriate refuge disposal outlets, then a lot of these filth issues wouldn't exist. Some political party's idea of allowing such living to go on, as it does, could be a means of a backdoor for sanctuary for individuals. How do you think West Baltimore and California neighborhoods have evolved as they have? You know the ones you see in the news with uncontrollable waste in their backyards? It started with one individual house, and one individual house being let go and permitted to continue in the condition it is, and then spread like a mushroom farm from one house to the next to the next. Some politicians think throwing money at the situation will resolve the issue. I'm here to say, my taxpayer money isn't getting thrown away in this fashion. Control the filth problem at its source. I'm glad to see such a good turnout concerning this issue. We must get involved to get results. Inform code enforcement officers of ordinance violators. If things don't improve, then the question must be raised as to his ability to do his job, or is there a political agenda involved? Please understand me, I am a capitalist and businessman. The robust economy requires a workforce. The workers and their families need places to live, but it is important to stress, if these owners aren't reined in in keeping their tenants standard of living by which we live by, this area will be enveloped by waste, as you have witnessed in West Baltimore and California. The whole neighborhood turned into a refuge dump. This is a serious problem, if not kept in control of. It's important everybody understand, I have pictures of a out-of-state landlord property that's in my neighborhood where trash was accumulating, and it took nearly nine months for that problem to be addressed. I have a petition here, signed by many people, 45, from Planet Fitness, and each one of those people told me throughout this valley, "I have a neighbor just like that." So this is a problem. Has anyone heard of a beating child scenario? An emperor's son or daughter misbehaves, no one dare lay a hand on them, because their father's status is in order to have the son or daughter realize they are misbehaving, the beating child is brought in. Usually an orphan, and they start to beat this young child, and the beating continues until the emperor's child starts to feel sympathy for the child or the young child being punished. I bring that up in respect to, we as the payees of the rain tax are equivalent to the beating child. We are being punished for the lifestyles of people who are here, I believe, for political purposes. I view the circumstance of the payees of the rain tax as being punished for the flagrant, filthy lifestyles of the absentee landlord's residents. If these out-of-state landlord's tenants were reined in, then you would see far less pollution that is collecting in the storm drains and catch basins, and if not caught, it ends up in the river. I appreciate your basis. Now, back to what I was asking you, Chairman- Now, back to what I was asking you, Chairman.
Yes.
The question is in regards to if we are in a lean status with Wyoming Valley Sanitary, does that affect our credit score?
Whether the county's in lean status, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Our entity.
Yes, you're right.
We have not had a lead thought against us at this time. We have our highest credit rating in Luzerne County history at this time. Obviously, we would seek to defend that pretty heavily moving forward. We're at the point right now where I've asked the solicitor's office to confirm that this is in fact a legal tax on Luzerne County, which is a third-class county. I anticipate a decision by the solicitor on February 11th, and by that time, we'll make a decision as to what we're going to be doing with our bill. Luzerne County, like everyone else in this room, also received a bill for the property that Luzerne County owns. I want to confirm that the sanitary authority has the legal authority to put such a fee on a county of the third class, and if so, then I'll sit down with counsel and come up with a plan.
Okay, I've just... You have to understand my viewpoint on that I've always been, as a property owner, one to pay his bills on time. If I personally had a lien on my property, I know that would affect my credit score. That's why I pay my bills regularly, and my credit score shows that. It is 825, okay? Let's see if everybody sees that. I say this because that's how we want the council here to do their business. One last thing I wanted to mention. I suggest that people get involved and report these homes that are let go, and then it adds to the trash issues in our area. To get involved means positive results, and hopefully this will put an end to what we are being subject to. And the end result with me getting involved, I believe, in Nanticoke, this is the Nanticoke City 2020 budget presentation. Last... This year's budget, the sewer fee was decreased from 150 to 125. So results do come about, but it takes somebody with nerves to go out and poke the bear, I guess you could say. Thanks for your patience.
Mr. Shamsky?
Thank you for your time. Now, I give everybody a copy of this. This is the stormwater fee and how it's enacted.
I think you put it on everybody's place already, right?
Yes.
Correct?
And what it means. Well, in the words here, according to the law, this is their law of 2008, it says, "As a community, you shall decide who enacts the stormwater fee, who regulates the stormwater fee." On any agenda, I'd never seen this on the ballot anywhere in Pennsylvania, did any taxpayer vote for this. I'm not saying that we do not need the stormwater fees. We do, it's a federal law. But how it's regulated and who regulates it was enacted by somebody else. So I called and made calls away from the federal government to the state, to the county, and I asked, "Who gave the Wyoming Valley Sewer Authority to write the collect this fee?" Everybody passed a buck, and it finally came down to the Wyoming Valley Sewer Authority Board of Directors made the decision. Well, the Wyoming Valley Sewer Authority is a private company, so I don't know how a private company oversees county, state, municipality, or federal law. How's that enacted? Now, you'll come under that they're under regulation, the municipality regulations, which they are, but they filed a fee of $125, and anybody in this room could do the same thing. File a fee with the municipality and create your own municipality act, and then I'm under your authority. Now, they'll say, "Well, we're under EPA authority." Well, they are under the EPA to clean up the sewer discharge. Now, this law here stays exactly impervious, and that's what everybody's arguing, that they're paying a fee for impervious. And the sewer authority, whether it's DAMA or Wyoming Valley Sewer or Scranton, is saying, "Well, your roof is an impervious property." But they don't repeat the second part of this law here, where it says that the impervious part of discharge must go directly into the sewer system or stormwater system to be enacted as a fee. It also states that if you make provisions to clean up your environment, change your property, or do something to reduce the amount of water going into the sewer, then your rates will be reduced. It also has an exemplary clause, and I asked everybody outside, including everybody in this room, was anybody, anybody ever exempted for being elderly, disabled, a veteran, something? No, everybody's paying this fee, and no one knows how it came about and who said, "You have the right to collect." I'm not saying we don't have a right to have a fee. It is a federal law. You have the right, and you must follow federal law. But how it's enacted and who acts upon it and how it's collected was never upon the voters, and this law says that the voters must vote first. So if we are going to have somebody collect it, I prefer that we have the utility commissioner of the state collect it, Tom Clark. And the reason I pick him is he's a fair man. He's also elected official. He worked for everybody. Luzerne County is a private company. They don't work for me, they don't work for you, they don't work for anybody. They only answer to their board of directors. So when they say we're going to increase our wages or increase our fees, who's going to regulate that? Because I asked who regulates them, and no one, no one in Luzerne County, no one in the state, no one in the environment regulates them because they're a private company. Therefore, they could get away with increasing the amount with no say. USS legislators have the right to protect the people, and you could do that very simple. You could stop this action, take it back to the voters, and vote on who regulates it, how much you pay, and if you did anything to reduce your consumption into the wastewater, you're entitled to reduction according to the law. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Read this and do the right thing, and thank you for your services.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, is there anyone else?
I don't know if Mike Stash is outside still. Is Mike Stash...
He's in the back. He's in the back row.
Oh, there he is, okay.
As I said earlier, my name is Mike Stash. I'm from Lehman Township, and I represent a group that was recently formed to fight this rain tax, as we all feel that it's unfairly administered, and we formed a 501(c)(3) to actually legally battle this. And we're urging right now, we're urging that the council vote in favor of the resolution presented by Walter Griffith to halt the overreaching MS4 program, otherwise known as the rain tax. Over the past year, much has been said about this new tax, and yet here we are, one year later, with one lingering question remaining. Are we positively impacting the environment, or are we negatively impacting our economy? The way I see it, we're at a crossroads in history. We can continue on this path that was built on fear and financial devastation due to unrealistic fines and penalties imposed on towns by an unfeeling government agency, the DEP. A bleak future that is also based on deception and greed, as presented by the WVSA. On the other hand, we can choose a path that is built on trust and leadership and common sense, a choice which can lead us to a future which is a bit brighter with the satisfaction that government listen to the needs and will of the people. And make no mistake about it, other people are watching us. Indeed, America is watching us. What example will we set? We know that if the rain tax is to continue, the following will occur. Approximately $10 million will flow freely into the coffers of the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. Folks, in three years, that's $30 million. Then in 2023, this figure is scheduled to increase by 65%, and in five years, this fee will increase by a to-be-determined amount. Am I the only one that's alarmed by this? Residents who already struggle with an unfair property tax will struggle even more, but the rain tax goes further. This tax now includes previously untaxed impervious areas, such as driveways, sidewalks, barns, handicap structures, nonprofits, churches, and even cemeteries. Yes, that's right, even the dead pay on this one. Businesses will be forced to pass this tax on to its customers, which will further burden county residents. No business will take this fee off their bottom line. I've seen this already. If not recovered through increased prices, it will come as a result of decreased salaries. This tax will dampen economic development and will cause existing businesses to leave. A whole new bureaucracy will roam our streets looking for violators who unknowingly wash their cars in their driveways and drain their pool covers of rainwater into the streets. And these non-elected officials with their hefty salaries and defined benefit packages will be supported by tax dollars. And the ultimate in irony is that these bureaucracies, which have a way of sticking around and charge you for the rainwater that falls off your roof, will still dump raw sewage into rivers because of their antiquated systems of combined sewer outlets. And here is what we don't know if the rain tax is going to continue. Projects like stormwater parks and rain gardens will be placed into areas without future consideration of maintenance and prevention from mosquito-borne illnesses. Trees will be planted along streams where they will drop their leaves and branches, thereby increasing the pollutants of sediment and nitrogen that they are supposed to remove, not to mention trees falling into stream beds causing flooding situations. Future maintenance for the forest stream buffers must be budgeted forever. You just don't plant these things and forget about them. Who's going to pay for this? Right here. And make no mistake, I'm not against planting trees. I do that for a living. What happens if these pollution requirement, reduction requirements are not met? Indications already point to the fact that these projects do little, if anything, to reduce pollution. The University of Pennsylvania and the University of Maryland have both indicated that there might be problems with these projects as currently presented. The science behind some of these projects are indeed sketchy, and funding for them should be held back until further studies are done. Are there any limitations that can be placed on spending to achieve this pollution diet that we've been put on? A pollution diet which declares the natural process of sediment as a pollutant. May I remind you that the name of the Susquehanna River, given to us by Native Americans centuries ago, actually means muddy river? I contend, and geologists will back me up on this, that the fact that the Susquehanna will remain muddy for thousands of years into the future. So to surmise that somehow we can stop the natural process of sediment with regulation and rain gardens is truly absurd. As for the other pollutants of nitrogen and phosphorus, our area has a rating of perfect and moderate by the Chesapeake Bay's own website. In closing, I would like to make this observation. All my life, I've witnessed the growth of these regulatory agencies, and I've noticed one thing. They seem to have an authority that is unquestionable, especially when it comes to the environment. These agencies, like the EPA and the PADEP, interpret the law and pass regulations without regards to economies or even common sense. They seem to have more power than the lawmakers themselves. Winston Churchill talked about excessive regulation when he said, and I quote, "If you make 10,000 regulations, you destroy all respect for the law." One year later, millions spent and new regulations being made up as we go along. Counsel, I ask you simply, are we impacting the environment positively, or are we negatively impacting our economy and unfairly burdening our citizens? In my opinion, this is a blatant money grab. It's a jobs-for-votes-at-the-expense-of-the-taxpayer program. Please make sure this resolution passes and support the Department of Law to end this thing. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith, do we have any other?
Those are the only three that we're working on.
Okay. We'll go to regular public comment now, but someone can come up and talk about stormwater if they wish. We have to wait to be recognized, okay? You could be first, though, please. You stood up, so I need your name and where you reside, please.
Counsel, thank you for hearing me out. I'm actually not from the area.
Excuse me. We need your name and where you reside.
Jean Morgan, and I'm actually from Dixon City.
Okay.
Although I'm not from Luzerne County, I believe this issue is a Pennsylvanian issue collectively. I believe the issue is a Pennsylvanian issue solely. I hope, when I'm done addressing you, there will be more people from the outside Luzerne County to speak with you all here. I wanted to bring up this federal mandate called the Rain Fee from the Chesapeake Bay, which by law should be federally funded as per lawsuits from other cases before ruled. Taxes of all, the $5 fee you guys were complaining about before and trying to situate that, relieving property taxes, if and when alleviated, the last thing we need is a replacement tax. I'm asking you to be a champion for the people of Pennsylvania's Commonwealth. Here are some references that may help spearhead this legal issue, okay? Supreme Court rules for conservation and Constitution, June 20th, Pennsylvania Environmental Defense Fund versus Commonwealth. There was a huge win for Pennsylvania's Constitution, specifically Article 1, Section 27, Environmental Rights Amendment. In short, the proceeds from our resources, namely gas and oil, have been thrown into the general fund. This is rectified by the ruling as to take our monies from such and reinvest into the forest and our areas where they have been taken from to maintain and conserve. As to prohibit the degradation of our public natural resources. Nowhere in our Constitution does it say form an authority. To make tax for the elderly and the middle class? To drive business away? The Chesapeake should ask themselves, are they putting the fishing industry's money into the general fund? In short, they should be reinvesting like Pennsylvania's industries have been ordered to do. The Chesapeake is notoriously overfished, in so much for one oysters. Their mother nature's bay filters and cleaners, they were so overfished, they created oyster farms. Could you imagine? Which were almost breached for harvesting recently, in the last couple of months, if I'm not mistaken. Thankfully, they voted it down. Those farms and judges realized how important oyster farms are for the health of the bay. We have had issues with our own waterways, one per se, the Lakewana. She has been addressed by PA grants, volunteers, and such. Now she is a haven for festivals, kayaking, heritage trails, et cetera. It's a beautiful river now. Our Susquehanna, which is being blamed for polluting the Chesapeake, has recently been tested by the Procter &amp; Gamble paper mill area, and it passed with a good, clean water determination. This is tested frequently. That was in the paper a couple of months ago. I'm sure you all read the paper. We need you to consider being against this tax. Recently, Chesapeake has been plagued with another problem. They call it the dead zone. An algae outbreak, killing of aquatic life, caused by the heat of the sun. Where does this stop? Are we to be taxed for the sun now because of an algae outbreak? Maryland's Baltimore Borough, 7 to 0, voted to phase out the stormwater fee, stating it is a hardship for homeowners and chasing away business. Can you please reconsider your stance on the issue of Pennsylvania paying for another state's water problem? We take care of our own problems here in Pennsylvania through grants, volunteers. People really care.
Can you wrap it up? You have over your time at this point.
I will tell you that this will help the people. I have... I have a few other things here. There was a lawyer, if any of you want to take notes. Her name was Winthrop, and she actually won in Maryland against this tax. There's people, 90-year-old woman, $69 a quarter to start. People in Lancaster, starting out at $60 a quarter, now it's doubled, okay? If we think about it, this will be the tax that will be the tax that just keeps taking.
Thank you.
Like the gentleman said, churches, stores, municipal buildings, and so on, even airports. Four to five times taxed over people. We really have to stop it here.
Thank you. You already had your chance, but somebody else first.
John Newman Nannikook. I rise in support of Resolution R. 2020 as written and any amendments thereto. I call it the rain tax and not the stormwater fee. I do that because of what I consider settled law. And Mr. Vito, I hope you appreciate that term, settled law, and if it's not settled law, please let me know. Chief Justice John Roberts, in his majority decision on the Affordable Care Act, said you cannot mandate a fee as was written in the original Affordable Care Act. He said, "All mandates are tax." And that's how that decision came out. So for the fee, and it's a fee because authorities by law cannot tax, they cannot levy a tax. Only a municipality can levy a tax. And when the sanitary authority, and they knew this, they knew this. When they brought every municipality within their authority into this situation, and I'll call it a conundrum because that's what it is. They talked each municipality into going in with them so that they could charge the fee. Had the municipalities stayed out, it could have become a tax. Now, the effect of the tax on Luzerne County, on the county. And I know, Mr. Pedry, you try to negotiate with your win-win, negotiate to the needs of your opposer. I'm sure you try to negotiate in good faith. You cannot negotiate in good faith with the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority because it stands, as it stands right now, they have no needs. Their needs are supported by all of us and their so-called fee, which is a tax. So they get, they're collecting huge amounts of money. And they're saying, well, there's still people that haven't paid, and if you haven't paid, we're going to come put a lien on your property. I'm not sure they can do that. They can try. But let's look at the long-term effects on what this does to the county, the school boards, the municipalities, okay? They're going to have to raise millage. They're going to have to raise millage on you and all of us. They're going to have to raise millage. So when we pay the fee to the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority, whatever amount it is, and some of them are godly high, and David Pedry know how high that is, we, as taxpayers now, will see the millage go up for our school taxes, for our municipal taxes, for our county taxes, and we still have to pay the stormwater fee. So each and every one of us that owns property are going to pay four times. And I probably missed one or two that'll make it five or six. So with that in mind, you know, and again, I feel sorry. I feel sorry for people that have been assessed these ungodly amounts. And I worry about what is it going to do to the growth in this county that we've experienced over the last two years? What is it going to do to it? That 1.5 million square foot warehouse that's under contract to true value, what are they paying for their impervious property? And are they going to stay? Probably they will, but is anybody new going to come in? If you're looking at coming into Luzerne County now and you say, "Whoa, what is this? Stormwater?" No, we'll go somewhere else. And we don't want that to happen. We don't want that to happen. Who'll think, who will rotate there?
Mr. Newman, if you could.
So I'll sum up. I'll sum up if I may, okay?
Please.
Pass the resolution now. Don't sit on it. Don't table it. Don't massage it. Don't study it. Don't rewrite it. Pass it. It's a good resolution. It's very well-written. And don't negotiate with Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. If they want to, tell them to KYA. And if you don't understand what that means, I'd be happy to tell you. And I'll call your attention to one thing. This preamble, the penultimate paragraph, there's nine words which I'll call your attention to, "and elected legislators to ensure fair and just representation." And that's what we're asking for. Fair and just representation. I yield my time to whoever the hell wants.
Well, we appreciate that, but we have a lot of people who want to speak, and we want to give them an opportunity and...
Thank you for your talking.
Well, we would hope that you respect everybody else in that group. Wait a minute. A gentleman in the back row, then Mr. Raybo, then our gentleman in the front row. Give us your name again, please, and you...
My name is Ralph James Minella. I represent, which I'm proud to say, one day may even be the mayor, Pittston City. I'm not a scientist nor a physicist. I did get a B in biology, Pittston area. I think it's going to be pretty hard to clean up this mess. It is a big mess. It's an environmental issue dealing with Pennsylvania, Maryland, Chesapeake Bay, and all that. This is true. But I think the problem goes back even before the founders came here, and which I'm proud to say, William Penn, the Quakers, the Society of Friends, who founded Pennsylvania, and they called it Penn's Woods, because the king didn't have the money to give William Penn, so he gave him this beautiful land, which I'm proud to say I love Pennsylvania. It goes back even to the Indians, before the Indians were here, 200 years ago. So in conclusion, I'm going to make it brief. I'm neither a lawyer, but I like to study law on the side. I read things about it, and our beautiful constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is simply this. We were founded here by the Society of Friends, the Quakers in Philadelphia, for God, truth, and principles, or even our emblem has, liberty, independence, and virtue. If this panel and Wyoming Valley Sewer Authority could put all this in writing and not this bull crap, these big booklets, all that, to simplify it and prove it's going to be worthy and a good cause biologically and emotionally for out there for all the land, and notarize it and prove it, and all the panel here sign it as a proof, I think it'll work. It could work. It's possible. But if this is not in good virtue, and it come down to this, the sin of greed under God. More jobs, more pensions, pensions, in the words of Harry S. Truman, who was a Democrat but very conservative. And you think I'm making this up? Look it up. It's in the computer. He, in his own words, said, "Unions and pensions, if it's not done under God within common sense, it could ruin this country." Truman said those words. You and the panel and the Wyoming Valley Sewer Authority, you could lie to me, you could lie to them, and you could lie to the system of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but I assure all of you, and this I will put in writing if you want and notarize it, you cannot lie to God Almighty. I love my state, but ladies and gentlemen of the council and the Wyoming Valley Sanitation Authority, be careful. Don't play God because it's going to come and it's going to haunt you at night. The sin of greed. You cannot escape that because it comes from above. I say God bless this panel. Use common sense. Pray over it too. God bless our beautiful state, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Thank you, the panel. I respect you.
Mr. Raybo.
First of all, I'd like to tie in the rain tax or stormwater fee with the $5 fee because in one respect, this is an abdication by our state legislature, which I call the Imperial Assembly, which feels that they can kick it down to the counties and to the municipalities to pay for everything that they are constitutionally obligated to do. Because they figure, oh, we don't want to look like the bad guy. We don't want to charge a stormwater management fee. We don't want to charge more in gasoline tax, even though they keep raising the toll tax at the Pennsylvania Turnpike, and they also raise, they're going to raise the gas tax probably when this governor leaves office in a year and a half. So, you know, what's there left? I mean, they're hoarding all the money, yet they're making the county, the municipal authorities, which I would like to address one thing that was said before, the municipal authorities can unfortunately put a lien or shut off water based on the Pennsylvania Water Services Act. That is statutorily allowed by the municipal authorities, by the service utility authorities to do that. They are allowed to do, unfortunately. However, according to what one previous speaker said, I believe that the county has ability to fight it because of the fact that Article 1, Section 27 of the Constitution, the state Constitution, says the state, the Commonwealth, shall preserve and maintain the waterways. It's not up to the municipalities. It's not up for the county. It's to their, to DEP's job, and it's the state assembly that puts any kind of charge on the people. They have a multitude of ways to collect money instead of a backdoor property tax, which the rain tax is. It's a backdoor property tax. And if somebody wants to tell me otherwise, whether state or any other official, let them talk to me. Because I'll tell you right now, it's a backdoor tax. Now, the gasoline tax, when you have the gasoline tax and this stormwater fee that's being collected, I want to refer to the relationship between federal and state law, which allows for this money to be collected. The money that the state abdicated to be collected by the municipalities and by the municipal authorities is because of certain provisions based on a court mandate from D.C. Circuit Court of Appeals upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court in 2015. I would like to, since I could be here for three hours talking about it, but I'm not going to, I'm just going to send you an email, I'm going to sum up with this. I think that Mr. Pedry, this council should give Mr. Pedry the authority to challenge the validity of the county's, the bill from the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority to this county to pay for something that the state has to do. It's not the county's obligation. It's not the municipality's obligation. It's the state. The state signed the agreement with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation to maintain, to be a good steward of the waterways. It's not up to you guys. So I think Mr. Griffith is right in terms of the unfunded mandate statute, the federal statute on unfunded mandates, which is being violated. And I think it's under that standing that should, the solicitor should be saying that this is allowed. I don't think that the county should be paying this. I don't think that the municipality should be paying this. And you know what else? Why is New York not being fined? It still hasn't been fined. And they got $230 million from the EPA for stormwater management.
Okay, Mr. Raybo.
So I'm just going to leave it with that. Thank you.
Mr. McCabe?
Yeah, I'm sitting here listening all night about stormwater. There's 100 people out there tonight. I think it's about time council makes a resolution to get Matt Cartwright to Congress from Scranton down there to find out what's going on. Last year, when I met with the sewer authorities up in Exeter, the big wheels told me, I said, "What happened in New York when they dumped all the chemicals in the river? Nothing. We have no control over it." They can control me about sending one of my driveways out. There's no property or house on it or anything. I'm paying extra money for the second property. But yet, I think we need answers from the federal government. I think at this time, you should make a resolution, welcome Matt Cartwright down here to explain to the people, whether if it's in the stadium or gymnasium or what. I think that'd be the smart thing to do at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So one other hand back there. Want to come to the podium? Give us your name, please, and where do you reside?
Hi, my name is Brian Dwyer, resident of Luzerne County. I live in the town of Larksville.
Thank you.
You saw me speak before about the $5 vehicles fee and saying enough's enough. And this is my point. This is a bridge too far. My bill on one property is $800. I live in town. I don't have it, and I'm not paying it. They're threatening to shut my water off. All these people spoke before me. They were, you know, tried to be nice people. No, I'm talking to you. I'm getting to the point.
A lot of the gentlemen speak so we can hear them clearly, please.
Thank you. But they're okay. They're okay. I talked to Walter. We spoke to Maggie Witherep, and I know Mr. DeLuca spoke to her. She feels confident in a legal approach against this matter. And I think the county, I think it's incumbent upon you, I think it's your duty as stewards of this county to take that action. And I don't know necessarily about filing an injunction against the federal government or the state, but I think you definitely should file one against Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. or the state, but I think you definitely should file one against Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. They pulled $8.4 million, by their own accounting, out of Luzern County. If I could pick my property up, and I know you're just getting my opinion on it, but I actually did the math and I looked into it, I checked on it, I do a lot of work in Skokille County. If I could pick my property up and move it down there, I would save $1,100 a year just by moving down there. I can't get rid of my property up here. Who's gonna buy my property when it's got an $800 bill on it? This is ridiculous. And I get no service for that money. I live on the side of a hill. The water runs off that property, goes across the street to a creek, the creek's probably 500 yards from the Susquehanna River. They're not treating anything. One of the gentlemen that spoke before talked about the News Watch 16 article, "Power to Save." Yeah, it was a great article, showed how they're misusing the money. They charge $215.60 a year if you pay upfront, and I do, I get my bill, I get my county taxes. On the piece of property where their sewer tax, I'm sorry, sewer tax, the rain tax, is $800, my county taxes are $1,500, and I pay them. I don't have a problem with that. My school district taxes are $3,500. I'm already paying five grand. Now you want another thousand a year? I'm done. It's enough. It's a bridge too far. And it's incumbent on this body to do something about it. And I think you need to file an injunction against those guys. In Larksville, they passed an ordinance for the garbage fee. Now, state law says they can only use that money for garbage services. It can't be moved into the general fund, it can't be moved for road repair, and it can't be used for fuel money. And if they have so much surplus over a three-year period, they have to reduce the rate. Well, in the $215.60 I pay Wyoming Valley Sanitary, there's a maintenance fee in there. So if they needed money to do this, they can't use stormwater money. That has to be used for stormwater services. Yet, in the article on WNEP, and I watched it, they're talking about doing all this maintenance and sewage treatment plan. Well, what'd they do with the sewage maintenance money for 30 years? It's gotta end, and it's incumbent upon this body to take action. You people have to do something. And I mean, I hate to be blunt about it, but I'm that guy, I'm not eloquent as these people. If you don't vote for this...
You're doing fine.
Maybe some of us aren't gonna vote for you come election time. I don't know how else to put it, you know? And I don't, personally, I know a couple of you, and I don't have a problem with any of you. I voted to go from the three-commissioner system to what this body is now, but this is why I voted for it, to have more control over what goes on in this county. And you guys are the stewards of this. This is what you're supposed to do. So I'm urging you to support Walter's measure, and not just an injunction necessarily against the federal government or sending a letter to President like whoop-de-doo, I don't care, you know? Take WVSA to court. And I gave Mr. Griffith the paperwork that the group that Mike and I are in, the Rain Power Taxpayer Association Group, she gave us a fee. You know, ballpark, 150,000, she felt confident in her legal approach to that. Mr. Pedry, what was...
Excuse me. Have the questions, please.
Okay. I just wanna make sure the facts, it was only a question about that. The initial county bill was 190,000?
192.
Okay, and it was negotiated initially down to 115?
118.
118, okay.
But that's because the county has MS4 permit.
No, and I understand that.
Well, just so you understand how that difference is...
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. You know, and I'm glad that the county did that. But as some of these other people pointed out, you know, what happens if he can't negotiate something with them, or he did for this year and we get the bill waived? What happens next year?
As long as we have the permit, we have a credit.
No, 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 okay, we still owe 119,000, correct?
118?
We're 118?
Something like that.
We still have a bill for 118,000.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, which is gonna be there next year and the year after. At some point in time, this body's not gonna have the money, you're gonna have to come up with it somewhere. You're looking at where it's coming from. Okay, we can spend that amount...
I fully understand that.
Yeah, we can spend that amount one time in court and possibly stop this. I would gladly give you 150 bucks, and so would most other residents, to pay to get rid of this than, well, I don't need a microphone. Then to sit there and have to pay them...
You don't need a microphone, but people at home need that assistance.
Okay, all right, it's back on.
Thank you.
No, no problem. I would gladly give you $150 extra in county property tax to get this matter taken care of and litigated in court than have to give them $800 a year for something I receive no service for. They're threatening to shut my water off, they're threatening to lien another property, and the action to threaten to shut the water off, that's a misuse of government authority. There is a water act that says they can do that if you're not paying your sewer bill. I paid the sewer bill. I didn't pay the rain tax.
We're not questioning that.
No, and I understand, I'm just, I'm telling you my position, so we're all in the thing.
I think it's very clear what your position is.
Oh, yeah. There shouldn't be any doubt.
But, you know...
No, that's, I'm good.
I think you've had your opportunity at this point, whereas other people would like to speak.
Okay, thank you.
But the one thing I just would like to point out to you, you talked about $150, that would have to go to the county in some form, okay? Just so you're very clear on that.
I don't mean the chairman individually.
No, or any member of council or whatever.
I don't mean the body individually. It was meant as a one-time property tax to fund a local town.
I understand, but I just wanna make that clear, 'cause I don't want somebody to walk out of here and saying that, you know, somebody's...
You are correct, sir. We have to cross the Ts and dot the Is.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.[1552.25][1552.25](APPLAUSE). Mr. Shamsky? I never worried about that, Mr. Newman, and I know I won't be worried about it in the future. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Shiner? Am I right? Can I see your hand?
Before council is a resolution to approach the President, the EPA, the DEP, and do what is necessary to help the residents of Luzern County get out from under the stormwater fee. This is being presented as an MS4 program. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It would be nice if we had that, but we don't. Our storm sewers overflow into the regular sewers. The goal of this, and I agree with taking care of our environment and reducing our pollution, but the whole goal of this program is to reduce the phosphorus by 5%, the nitrogen by 3%, and the sediment by 10% going down the river and polluting the Chesapeake. What about the acid mine water runoff? What about all the raw sewage that the sanitary authority dumps in in high water? What about all the sewage coming down from New York? But yet they think the sedimentation, phosphorus, and nitrogen reduction is going to save the Chesapeake. I think there's a lot of other work that needs to be considered and taken into account before they come after this type of a reduction. We have to look to you to help the people of this county. We elected you to do what's best for the residents of this county. And this stormwater fee is not in the best interests of this county, not the residents, not the businesses, not anyone. Someone says, "Where does it stop?" Well, on my way here tonight, I heard on the radio, it doesn't. New York State is passing a stargazer's fee to charge people going into the parks to sit there and look at the stars. It doesn't stop unless we stop it. And that means us, the residents of this county, through you, our elected officials. You need to file, pass this resolution, you need to do whatever you can, you need to authorize the Office of Law to file the injunctions where necessary. Doesn't mean you'll succeed, but at least you need to try. It's what we elected you to do to represent us and do what's best for us in this county. This rain tax is not what's best for this county.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion adjourned the voting session.
Mr. Vog.
Mr. Vog.
Second.
Ms. Saban. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Extentions not heard. We're gonna take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back for the work session.
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Okay. Hold it back.
I would hope we can, sir. No, that's gone.